It is 6:11, it's February 23rd, we're gonna call this city council meeting to order. Can we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Mays?
Present.
Mr. Nelson?
Present.
Mr. Freeman?
Here.
Mr. Davis?
Here.
Mr. Winfrey?
Present.
Ms. Galloway?
Present.
Ms. Van Buren?
Present.
Mr. Kincaid?
All right, can we have the pledge allegiance, President Davis?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First item on our agenda are the minutes, can we get a motion to do something with those?
Mr. President?
Mr. Mays?
Yeah, I would move that we approve the minutes with corrections.
We got a motion on the floor supported by Councilman Kincaid to move with corrections. What are your corrections, Councilman?
What are my corrections?
Yeah.
On the votes, only abstained, as I recall, on one vote, and that was the abstention.
Do you have the revised minutes in front of you, Councilman?
Oh, okay, let's look. So that has been revised?
There's revised minutes in front of you there, Councilman.
Yeah, I do have them, but the ones that I looked at over the weekend didn't reflect that. Are the revised minutes reflecting that?
Reflecting what, Councilman?
That the ones I looked at over the weekend had me abstaining more than one time. And so I'm looking at that now, the appointment for, um... Watch this. On the revised minutes, that would show the appointment of Mr. Winfrey. Do you see, do you see that on there?
On page two, at the bottom of page two.
The bottom of page two. And that's to the economic, okay, and on the bottom of page two that carries over to page three, abstain, okay, and that would reflect, see, and then if you look at the resolution dealing with Victoria Van Buren to the master plan and steering committee, I did not abstain on that. So that would be one correction, I voted in favor of that. You see that?
I see it, Councilman.
On page three, that would be a correction, and it was two abstentions.
Councilman, why don't you postpone these to our next meeting and I'll have time to review what happened at the meeting, and then we can make whatever corrections you think need to be made at that time, rather than sitting here and trying to guess which one?
Well, no, it was two abstentions, and it was only one abstention, that was my corrections. And then I looked for them to try to be more specific, and you directed me to which page, and once I seen which page, I would then follow your instructions and move to postpone the minutes with corrections into the next council meeting.
Then move to postpone, it's been supported by Councilman Kincaid, is there any further discussion? Can we get a roll call both, please? Get with that.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Nelson?
Yes.
Mr. Freeman?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Winfrey?
Yes.
Ms. Galloway?
Yes.
Ms. Van Buren?
Yes.
Mr. Kincaid?
Yes.
The vote is eight yes, zero no.
Next item on our, motion passes, next item on our agenda is a special order to introduce our new city administrator, Ms. Henderson, Mr., what's your name, Mr. Ambrose? Yes, sorry.
Thank you, Mr. President, council members. Tonight is a new chap, opening of a new chapter in the transition of Flint city government. We are proud to have a new city administrator onboard as of today, and we are looking forward to moving forward, as we've been talking about for the last several weeks, in terms of our path to transition, where Flint returns to home rule. And with that, I'm going to call upon Mayor Walling to introduce our new city administrator.
Well, thank you, sir, and good evening, council members. As I had mentioned briefly in the committee, I just want to share my welcome with city administrator Henderson as well. She's expressed to me that she's committed to working with us as ten elected officials as we work through the budget process and forward on our goals, objectives, so that we can achieve the vision that we have for our community. So she's pledged to work with all of us. I want each of you to know that when I was first asked to be a part of the selection process, I made a decision in my mind at that point as to whether I would participate in this process in good faith, I made a decision that I would. I always, when given the opportunity, will step up to serve this community and to put forward my best estimate and judgment, however difficult the choices that may face us. So that process has brought us to this point. City Administrator Henderson brings with her a great deal of experience, and again, I've been impressed in conversations with her about her commitment to work with us as elected officials, so that we can achieve this smooth transition and then carry that momentum forward into the future. So with that, I'd like to invite city administrator Natasha Henderson, thank you.
Mayor and council, I am, once again, I'd like to say that I am excited about being here, I look forward to working with you, I look forward to becoming a part of the community. I live downtown, I'm officially a Flint resident. I have walked to, to a eatery in two-degree weather, so I'm officially a Flint resident. So I'm glad to be here, and I look forward to working with you as the leadership team, mayor and council, the leadership team, directors, getting to know the community once again, and I'm just excited about it, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. President?
Yeah?
Okay, Mr. President, I would say for the record, we did meet Ms. Henderson in special affairs, but I can see that, you know, even though we had advocated for Paul Heron to be our recorder, I see the door open, Mr. Lorenz is recording. And this communications with the introduction of Ms. Henderson goes out to million, well, I ain't gonna say millions, but hundreds and thousands of viewers over our public access station, channel seventeen, and we have a few people in the audience, and I would be remiss if I didn't say, "Ms. Henderson, I think I heard you say something about God when you started out. I'm a believer in God, I'm spiritual myself, but, you know, you came to us not through the normal process. Normally, under the charter, the mayor might recommend and the council approves. But I did sit in this very chambers when you interviewed, and I respect your credentials, I met family members, and you now have a five-year contract, as has been talked about, high-profile in the media, one of the highest-paid employees, a hundred and forty thousand, and to the community, we, they gonna look for great things. I look for great things, but I know it is a team, and I would say that in the political arena with the council people, as you talk to the mayor, the emergency manager, and council leadership, I'm just a regular council person, and so I want you to look at us as individuals and collectively, and you seem to be the type of person that might deal with us individually. So I would say, welcome, but you're coming under a contract, under emergency manager law, that we have had a lot of people ask us about, a hundred and forty thousand a car expense accounts, and so I would say to you, welcome, I'm glad to see that you're in the city of Flint. If this downtown area don't suit you, we've got some good property and housing in the first ward, and we'd be willing to show them to you as well. So that's a plus that you're in the city, that mean you'll pay taxes, and I'm gonna reserve my opinion, and I'm gonna take a slow start, I'm gonna take a welcome start, because right now, you're coming in as a result of missed early selection, no real input from the mayor and the council, but in a human sense, I'm willing to meet you, work with you, and see what we can do together, working to fix stuff and the various issues in the city of Flint.
Thank you, Council.
God bless you.
Next item on our agenda is public hearing, we've got 150106.1, which deals with a reduction of lanes in Stewart Avenue from six to five.
If I might, Mr. President, it's a public hearing to consider the reduction of one lane on Stewart Avenue and Andrew Street from six lanes to five lanes, as requested by the Transportation Department, and we should indicate also that this is a project whereby the city of Flint and the Michigan Department of Transportation are working together to provide road improvements on Stewart Avenue and Andrew Street.
Are there any speakers for this public hearing? Any speakers for this public hearing?
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Quincy Murphy, and I grew up around this area by Stewart Street and have family that live around here. I notice when I ride up and down Stewart Street, the lights are out, and I hope that in this reconstruction of Stewart Street, that you guys look at the lighting going over the bridge of Stewart Street, and I'm, I'm not really sure what you mean by reducing the lanes from six lanes to five lanes, shall be held, I mean, excuse me, I don't hear y'all talking about reducing the lanes, so if someone could kind of clarify, maybe Councilman Nelson know a little bit more about what you guys are talking about, I know it's two lanes going both ways, so could y'all kind of explain more what you guys mean by reducing the lanes and going around the Andrew area? When y'all do the reconstruction, hopefully that you guys add in there the sidewalks where people will be able to walk on the sidewalk area and keep that brush off that's going around where y'all just built the new plan that maintained, thank you.
Any other speakers for this public hearing? Any other speakers for this public hearing? Can you give us your name and address for the record, please?
Dane Walling, mayor, 806 Kensington, city of Flint. I just wanted to publicly take a minute to express my support for this project. We've talked for a number of years about the need to bring jobs and development back to the Buick City corridor, this is an important part of our base economy, and we have a new company that worked with us. A question came up at the last council meeting about development agreements and local hiring. One of the agreements that we made with American Spiral Weld when they moved in is that we would make every effort that we could to improve the infrastructure, so that they could safely bring their product and their trucks in and out of that site. Many of those roads in that corridor date from the Buick City era, and they will need to be updated. We were able to work with the state to identify a large amount of grant resources, so that this comes at a very minimal cost to our local community, and I think this is money that's very well-spent for us, and it's the kind of long-term economic development work that we need to do throughout that entire corridor. So I hope we can continue to work together, so that we can revitalize the entire Buick City corridor from, from top to bottom throughout the north side, and continue to bring commerce and employment into that critical area, but we're going to have to work with each and every company to meet their needs. We're prepared to do that in our new department of planning and development, and then follow through working with our state and federal partners, so that we can meet those expectations. When they come to our community, we want them to have a successful enterprise, and that means we have a responsibility to deliver those upgrades to the infrastructure.
Thank you, is there any other speakers for this public hearing? RL, let's keep it on topic.
I'm Mr. Ariel Mitchell, I live at 7509 East Lyndon. Mr. President, I'm, I'm here to congratulate you for turning Flint into a January nineteenth of African-American Martin Luther King Day, closing down City Hall on January nineteenth, the first in the nation, and...
Thank you, thank you. Any other speakers for this public hearing? Let's do it right at the end, any other speakers for this public hearing? This public hearing's closed. Did you want, I see that Kay and Howard are both here.
Have Ms. Mohammed come up and can, can explain to some others and Mr. Murphy what we mean by the lane reduction.
Mr. President, thank you, council. MDOT is working with the city of Flint on the project on Stewart and Andrew, as the mayor did allude to. One of the things that they found during the engineering of that project is that you have three through lanes right now, and no dedicated left-turn lane. Since we are updating that area, the recommendation is you move to a dedicated left-turn lane, you will find that will, that will reduce crashes in the area, especially when you're thinking about increased commercial traffic, truck traffic. Right now, as you move through that corridor, if you're making a left-hand turn onto James Recole, you find that traffic, especially when it's heavy, people are dodging into the right lane, and that is very dangerous. With this upgrade, it will help to eliminate the left-turn traffic when you have the crashes, and also to move that traffic at a higher rate of speed. And so, we're hoping that will make it a safer area, and there will still be another additional lane, so if you go and you look at the pictures and you see an additional lane and you say, "Well, it's not five, it's six," there is an additional lane that you get onto the expressway, and it's just to do exactly that, use that as an access to the expressway, but we are speaking of the improvement, and that is the reduction of the through lanes. Mr. Murphy did ask about clarification on that, we do have the information available along with the visuals in the Department of Transportation, or he can reach me through email, and I will send him the electronic copy, that is the K-M-U-H-A-M-M-A-D@cityofflint.com. Thank you.
Thank you, Kay. All right.
Councilman Nelson?
Madam, President, Mr. President, I would like to move 150106.1.
Support.
Point two.
I'm sorry, point two.
Been moved and supported, is there discussion?
I think, Howard, how, did you have something that you wanted to, to say, I don't know if it's okay, he had had his hand up?
Thank you, council, I'd like to only add two things to what Ms. Mohammed say. A, the road was not sustainable, with that company, American Spiral Weld, and the weight of the product that they deliver, the Pacer rating of that road would have resulted in complete collapse in about two years' time, and in addition, as with other transportation projects, we'll be taking the opportunity to replace two valves on a significant transmission main that's underneath there, that will result in a better flow for water out of the system. So I just thought I'd add that in to the, the project notes, so that, so that would be on the record.
Is there any further discussion?
Yeah, Mr. President, when would that project be scheduled to start, do we know?
It is being run through our regional MDOT office, I believe out of Davison, I don't have a specific timetable, we'd have to wait until we had all the approvals.
Will that project include any of our street fund money?
Not of the street fund, we applied for a category A grant from the treasury and the waiver, due to the condition of the city right now, we will be using utility funding for the valve replacements.
So the money that we budgeted in last budget year, this is gonna require no changes or amendments, or we have cash sitting there?
This was a grant that we applied for in the category A, which is specific to economic development in an area, so we go, we went through the process of applying for that, and were awarded that grant with a waiver for the match.
And so this was, this is new money coming in for that project?
Correct.
And the valve change money is money that's gonna come out of the water and sewer fund?
That's correct, we have a certain allocation that we put in the budget for valve replacements, and anytime there's a transportation project, we evaluate what's underground and make a determination, can we make an improvement?
Yeah, that's smart, I can appreciate that. How much of that Stewart Street will be tore up or dug up, is it from Dorit Highway to what, Antioch, or do you know?
Approximately from the bridge overpass to Andrew, I believe.
Beg your pardon?
From the bridge, from the overpass, I apologize, from the overpass to the first road, I think it's Andrew or Horton.
Okay, and so we can see some infrastructure as far as the pipes go for the water and sewer and valve changes, you're gonna take that opportunity?
We're not gonna, the pipe there is relatively new, it's, and will last for ten to fifteen years, but the valves are antiquated, are in need of repair, there, there are valves we've wanted to change for some time.
So it's not your evaluation that while you're down there, and I don't know how it works, you don't have to do pipes and valves, just valves?
In this case, yes.
So all of that, we hear about cast-iron pipes and infrastructure, that's not an area that's affected in your mind?
It's not critical, no, we'll be able to get by, we have a number of other pipes that we, that are in our water reliability study, that are significantly in need of repair, and it's approximately a million dollars per mile, so that is not one of the ones that's high on the list for repair.
So valves, but the valve sits on the pipe, and I'm wrapping it up, Mr. President, the valve sits on the pipes, and so at no time in the next three to five years, do you see us going back down in there to deal with the pipes?
That's, that's exactly correct. We did evaluate that, and this was a great opportunity for us to make a significant positive impact on the distribution system by changing these valves, and the fact that the ground would be dug up means it's an opportune time to do that.
Did we evaluate the price and the material of the pipes, when we do pipes, will they stay cast-iron?
Yeah, we'll, and we'll make those determinations going forward along with you, too.
So those determinations, in fact, haven't been really made yet.
On the pipe underground there, we're comfortable with it.
Beg your pardon?
We're comfortable with the pipe that's underground right there.
All right, so the record of this inquiry is made, we'll see what happens in the future. Thank you, Mr. President.
Any further discussion? Can we have a roll call?
Mr. Nelson?
Yes.
Mr. Freeman?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Winfrey?
Yes.
Ms. Galloway?
Yes.
Ms. Van Buren?
Yes.
Mr. Kincaid?
Yes.
Mr. Mays?
Yes, I vote in favor of the street project, thank you.
The vote is eight yes, zero no.
Motion carries, are there any other communications from city officials, ma'am clerk?
No, Mr. President.
All right, next item on our agenda is appointments, we have several that were brought to us from committee.
I was waiting for you to say petitions and unofficial communications.
Okay.
Because I wanted to put that, make sure that if it's not, that the water expert, Robert Bocock, he sent us a copy of some of his recommendations for water, and he did it for the city for free, and I wanted to make sure I let the unofficial communications in the record speak in this meeting, that we receive and record, if we've not already did it in committee meeting, and we have, so we've already did that, but I wanted to make sure I didn't get passed by that. Janelle, we already did that?
Mr. President, Mr. Mays, if I might, please?
Okay.
That will appear on the next council agenda.
Okay.
As communication.
Okay, then, that would suffice, Mr. President, because I want to make sure that that, commit that report from that expert, Mr. Bocock, that we received in writing, I want it in the file of the record in the archives of the city. Thank you, Ms. Brown, and thank you, Mr. President, that would do for me, I can't speak for everybody else, but that does for me.
All right, next item on the agenda is appointments, can we get a motion to move? At least 107?
I move 10, Mr. President, I would move 150107, fourth ward reappointment of Carol Ann Lauer.
Support.
Been moved and supported, is there any discussion? Can we have a roll call?
Mr. Freeman?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Winfrey?
Yes.
Ms. Galloway?
Yes.
Ms. Van Buren?
Yes.
Mr. Kincaid?
Yes.
Mr. Mays?
Yes.
Mr. Nelson?
Yes.
The vote is eight yes, zero no.
Next item on the agenda is 150108.
Mr. President?
This is the fifth ward appointment, 150108, Councilman Davis?
I have a discussion on that, Mr. President.
Can we get a motion on the floor?
Yes, I'd like to bring a motion to the floor to speak about this appointment of Rob West.
Okay.
I'd like to put a point, I'd like to put a motion to the floor to speak about this appointment of Mr. Robert West.
Support.
Been moved and supported, is there discussion?
Oh, did you, you spoke to me about this thing?
I did.
Okay, well, yeah, okay, I remember now.
Okay.
I removed my motion, y'all remember that now.
We'll just make, okay.
I would just hit with an epiphany real quick, we did speak about it, so, okay, I removed my motion.
Mr. President, the motion has been removed?
Sounds like it has, yes, council.
Huh?
Yes, we need a motion to approve.
No, I would make a motion to postpone.
There's been a motion made to postpone, is there support? Dies for lack of support, is there a motion?
So there's no motion on the floor right now?
There's no motion on the floor.
Let me say this, if I may.
I'm not, I'm not recognizing you right now, I'm looking for a motion.
Mr. President?
Yeah?
You know, these, these appointments are...
Right now, I'm just looking for a motion on this, on this appointment, does somebody want to make a motion?
Yeah, I make a motion, Mr. President, I would move to approve.
Okay, we've been moved to approve, is there support? No support?
Support.
Been supported, is there discussion?
Mr. President, yeah, I don't know what's going on, so I wanted to get it to discussion, so I could hear from Mr. Davis in the fifth ward, I heard a motion to move, and then I heard it withdrawn, and then it was no support, and the chair, Mr. President, was looking for a motion, so I made the motion for the purpose of discussion, but you know, in committee meeting, particularly, I said that I wanted the chairperson, particularly Mr. Wesley, to show up, and I asked that it be postponed until the next council meeting, because these terms do not expire until March. Now, I know of all the work that the Planning Commission has done on the master plan, but what I said, I had a concern with that chairmanship of that Blue Ribbon Committee, and that was done under Mr. Wesley as it related to the emergency manager, and so as we move forward and as we transition out, I had said in committee that I would like some of the Planning Commissionists to at least show up. I seen Mr. Alameen here, I appointed him to the zoning board of appeals, and when his appointment was coming, Mr. Alameen is here tonight, but he was there then, and I don't like to give appointments out, and the people ain't excited to get them. If their schedule permits, this is an appointment, and you asking for votes, you should show up, they don't have to, but for that reason, I postponed it, because we got to really be a team, and I wanted to knock that stigma down, because it's been Bishop Airport Authority appointments, Hurley Hospital Authority appointments, and that was so humiliating to me, that they wouldn't give us the courtesy of just bringing an appointment for us, and so now it's a new day, appointments coming, and I just wanted to meet Mr. Wesley now, and the different... day. Appointment's coming, and I just wanted to meet Mr. Wesley now and the different appointees. I appoint, I, I voted for, you know, the fourth ward one, but now, in order for me to see what's going on with the fifth ward, we end discussion, and I thank you for allowing me those short words, Mr. President.
Is there any further discussion?
Mr. President, I just want to make a comment.
Mr. Kincaid?
You know, I get a little concerned when these appointments that are our appointments, councils' appointments. We have very few, three, to be exact. Um, and they either come from the mayor, or they come from us. And I've always looked to my colleague that is making a recommendation for that person, and I always support that person. I get a little bit concerned when there's a name of an individual that is being either appointed or reappointed that has been given to the administration and then brought before this body, and then we question whether or not we want that individual to serve on that board or commission when it's our representative from our ward. And I think we get into some very dangerous territory when we start challenging, um, other council members' recommendations for their representative. And, and I can tell you, as long as I've been on the city council, when a recommendation for a planning commission or a zoning board of appeals, position like that has ever come before this body, through the right process, I've never not supported my colleague who's recommending the name that person. Be like this evening. I, I would never vote against Pastor Gilbert. I mean, Pastor Gilbert's gonna be on the board of review, being recommended by councilperson Galloway. Why would I, as an individual, challenge her discretion on who she wants to represent the residents of her ward? And I think when we get into this discussion, Mr. President, that we're getting into some pretty volatile territory, because what I could see in the future is that individuals on the council take a position not to support somebody's recommendation. And I, I always look personally, I always look for the councilperson's recommendation, whether it's to approve or to postpone, on an appointment that is before us this evening. And, and I'm saying that, Councilman Davis, is because this was moved to council when you weren't in committee.
That's right.
And it was done with, without being there. But this, this individual, or these individuals on the planning commission are all reappointments. They've served there for a number of years, and they've been our representatives. When I say "our," each individual's representatives. If we wanna change that, then we work with the administration, we give the administration some different individuals, and we ask them to bring one of those individuals for our recommendation. I'm looking to my council colleague, Davis, for a recommendation on what he wants with this appointment. I'm not looking at councilperson Van Buren, or the president, or, or, or anyone else on this council. I'm looking at, at my colleague, Mr. Davis, to make a recommendation. This is his appointment through the administration, and I wanna know what he wants, not what somebody else on the council wants.
Council, uh, Kincaid, I highly respect that. And now that you mentioned it in that, in that form, I think that I would defer, uh, I think we should defer on this appointment. And, um, let's go back to the drawing board, because I really was not given any other names but Robert Wesley. And, um, I took, I took it for face value, because I felt that my colleagues knew what kind of work he done as planning commission. I didn't like the fact that he was on the Blue Ribbon Committee, so if I'd have made a decision without getting some form of input what he's done on the planning commission, then I would have been biased, due to the fact of me not appreciating and not understanding why would he be a part of the Blue Ribbon Committee. But now that you speak about it in that volume, um, I have to take this into consideration. And now I'm willing to get some names of other people that was going for this seat, and I feel that, um, I would like to defer on this at this particular time until I can get some other names and vet them and see what they're about, as opposed to Mr. Wesley. Um, but if Mr. Wesley is the most qualified one in the end of the vetting process, then I still will probably appoint Mr. Wesley, but I think other people should be given a chance, because I haven't seen no other names but Mr. Wesley. Uh, so if we can, Mr. President, I would like to defer on this, and then we can go back and see other names that was appointed, and we can do this at another day and another time, unless, uh, time is sensitive at this particular time.
So are you making, are you making a motion to postpone this then?
Yes, I am.
And to what date are you making a motion to postpone?
To next council meeting.
To our next regular committee of the whole meeting?
Committee of the whole, yes.
Okay. Is there support for?
I move to support it. It don't matter who you get to support it.
Right.
Whoever you get.
Right.
And I think that's...
Is there further discussion on the postponement?
Yes. Yes, I made this motion to postpone in committee meeting. And I don't care, um, you know, I know the looks from across the table. But, you know, everything we do in the back room ain't seen out in the front room, and it ain't seen on Channel Seventeen. So my position is this. They was never sign, time sensitive, even when we got out here. I understand that the fourth ward supported, or, you know, wanted that one moved. I understand that the fifth ward, who wasn't here then, is there now, and I understand that when Mr. Kincaid spoke, then now the motion to postpone happens. I have no problem with what has just happened here. But what we must understand is this, and I understand it, and I'm gonna just lay it out there. That planning commission with that master plan thing has got people looking. Now, I could care less about an emergency manager, a transition advisory board, what lasting seat. I've never voted like that. Never. Ain't voted like that under Hurley, ain't finna vote about it now, but the position is this. If Mr. Davis comes back with another name rather than that chairperson of that planning commission, Mr. Wesley, who I call is a golden child, one of them, I ask that Mr. Wesley come before this board, this council. And I said that in committee, and I said, now, whatever they come up with, Scott, Mr. Kincaid, I'm a little different than you. I don't just go off of what a council person say. I do my own vote with my own mind, based upon who vote, what way, and what they recommend. I look at the big picture. Remember, some council people wanted me to resign, after the people in my ward voted for me. So I didn't resign, 'cause what some councilperson wanted, and even the mayor. My position is this. I will look at it when it come. I'm gonna vote to postpone it. I thought about that the whole time. I'm also asking, hope that Mr. Wesley or whoever come here, whoever it is, particularly in that first ward, fifth ward, but this is the chairperson of planning, and I know how they looking and thinking. I ain't got no problem with it. I'll see if I vote for or against it. I'll see what Mr. Davis come up with, but I'm gonna let y'all know now. You ain't never gotta vote for my recommendation. Vote for what you think is right, and I'm not gonna agree to vote for nothing they done done for twenty years just because a council person recommended. That don't get my vote. I vote for what Councilman Mays think is right on that particular day, under those particular circumstances at that time. I thank you for listening to me. I will be voting to postpone, and I hope that the mayor, the city administrator, planning commission, Davis, and everybody get together on this, because I don't wanna see this type of thing come on the floor like this again, but if it do, I can live with it. It should have been postponed in committee or talked about before. God bless you. Thanks, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Councilman. Is there any further discussion? Can we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Winfrey?
Yes.
Ms. Galloway?
Yes.
Ms. Van Buren?
Yes.
Mr. Kincaid?
Yes.
Mr. Mays?
Yes.
Mr. Nelson?
Yes.
Mr. Freeman?
Yes.
The vote is eight yes, zero no to postpone.
Uh, next item on the agenda is 150109, Councilwoman Van Buren.
What, to make a motion, or?
That would be helpful.
What is that?
I said that would be helpful.
Yes. Make a motion to accept the reappointment of Phyllis McCree for Ward Eight.
It's been moved. Is there support?
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Is there any discussion?
Yeah, Mr. President, I would like to postpone it and see if Ms. McCree could pass through with Mr. Wesley, and if it's not time sens, sensitive. Yeah, I would make a substitute motion, particularly under the circumstances. I might approve it, but you know...
Is there support for that substitute motion? That motion fails. Back to the original motion. Is there any further discussion on, uh, the motion by Councilwoman Van Buren?
Yeah, Mr. President. Particularly with what happened in the fifth ward, I didn't wanna leave Mr. Wesley out there by him or self. I don't even know if he'll come back to us, but I thought it was proper to, um, have Ms. McCree, and that's still my position. I like for some of them to come through and show up and communicate, and, you know, sometime it helps to talk to them on the mic. I've sit in the planning commission meets. I've seen emergency managers. I've seen the planning commission staff, um, have a great relationship with these people as they direct a major part of our city. Um, as I listen to my colleagues vote, the handwriting is on the wall. This was made by the eighth ward, and, um, I know Ms. McCree, and, you know, I have no problem with supporting this, but really, I wish we could be a little more strategical, and we could, um, do things a certain way. No support for the postponement, that leaves the fifth ward out there by itself, which happens to be the chairperson. Let's see what happens on this round. Thank you.
Is there any further discussion?
Yes.
Councilwoman Van Buren?
Yes. What I would like to add about Phyllis McCree is I do know her. Uh, ever since I came on council, I've been attending the planning meetings. She's been very consistent in her attendance. She's very informed about the area, and she knows what is happening a lot of times before it happens. So I would like for her to still continue, and so we can have a good representation on the eighth ward. Uh, she does have an educational background, I think as a teacher and principal, and why, uh, fix something when it's not broken? I would like to continue to show support for her and ask for the rest of the council members to do the same. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Can we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Winfrey?
Support.
That's a yes?
Yes.
Okay. Ms. Galloway?
Yes.
Ms. Van Buren?
Yes.
Mr. Kincaid?
Yes.
Mr. Mays?
Yes.
Mr. Nelson?
Yes.
Mr. Freeman?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
The vote is eight yes, zero no.
Motion passes. Next item on our agenda is 150110, Councilwoman Galloway.
Motion, um, to appoint Albert Gilbert to the board of review.
It's been moved and supported. Is there any discussion?
Mr. President?
Mr. Mays?
This board of review, Mr. Gilbert, that's Pastor Gilbert, and, um, I would just like to see if we could indulge Pastor Gilbert for two minutes. You know, I said, I, you say we can't?
We're not going to.
I don't like that. You know why I don't like that? Because I know Pastor Gilbert, and I know these appointments mean something to individuals. And I see us indulge the staff, Ms. Mohammed and others, and I thought that was a courtesy, and I thought it would be nice. So, Mr. Gilbert, if they don't indulge you when your appointment go by, that's okay. But we got to learn to treat each other better, Mr. President. If we was in my committee, I would indulge him for two minutes. I'm gonna vote for you, Pastor Gilbert, and I'm sure you'll probably do an honest and fine job. Ms. Galloway, if that's your recommendation, I can appreciate that. But I'm telling you, watch how fast this meeting gonna go over when we, be over when we get through with these appointments. Mr. President ain't as hard-lying as you think. He might end up giving you a minute before it's over with, but I wanted to hear from you. I appreciate you, and Ms. Galloway, I will be supporting this appointment.
Any further discussion? Can we have a roll call, please?
Ms. Galloway?
Yes.
Ms. Van Buren?
Yes.
Mr. Kincaid?
Yes.
Mr. Mays?
Well, I was wrong. You didn't hear from him, but I'm gonna vote yes.
Mr. Nelson?
Yes.
Mr. Freeman?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Winfrey?
Yes.
Mr. President?
The vote is eight yes, zero no.
And the motion passes. Next item on our agenda is resolutions, which we've already taken care of. After that, we've got liquor licenses and ordinances, which there are none, uh, which brings us to public speaking.
Mr. President.
We're gonna go to public speaking first. There is an opportunity at the end of the meeting for council discussion, Mr. Mays.
Our first speaker is Mr. R.L. Mitchell. Mr. Mitchell?
Remember, you've got three minutes, and let's keep it civil.
My name is, hey, ma'am, what you, my name is R.L. Mitchell here by the, I'm listening. Uh, um, got five minutes to...
Three minutes.
Hey, Josh, uh, let me do the talking, ma'am. This is my time. Oh, I wanna address this situation about Pastor Gilbert. I live at seven, seven fifty nine East London Street, and my landlord is a concerned pastor, and that's, and I'm a concerned Christian. And I wanna welcome the financial management lady to Flint, Michigan, living in the middle of downtown, and she gotta walk in this unprecedented weather to the eatery to get a, a, a sandwich. And I'm, oh, and I'm living in fifth ward, this Davidson new ward, under, uh, they are leniencing with me, 'cause I put my friend in the house, and she living better than the financial management. That's what session they at. I figured you can come down there if you get tired of walking in that unprecedented weather to get a sandwich. And, and David, I'm pretty sure we gonna have a supermarket up there pretty soon. You can cook, and that right there, it's in the, all kind of stuff. This, this is the man for the, for the hour. So welcome to Flint again. But I said that to say this, Josh, and about this, uh, man that come in this, done this water stain for free, and I hope we don't get bamboozled and bushwhacked again like this. We paid forty thousand dollars for this other dude, and Peter Bay walked out again. And on Twelfth Street, nine one one, I hope we don't get bushwhacked again with this financial money on it. Eight hundred Meckel bond with this city property. Hey, wait a minute. To you, President, to, uh, Peter Bay. And we got a lawsuit on about this water stuff. Is it gonna go through for the public, Peter Bay? Give me some feedback, Peter Bay.
Are you done, Mr. Mitchell?
Man, what come up? What? Hey, man, you, uh, hey, Scotty, man, you, you always talking that junk, man. You, uh, and what?
Thank you for your time tonight. You can have a seat.
Hey, I still got...
Thank you.
Man, look at...
Thank you. Our next public speaker?
Our next speaker is Mr. A.C. Dumas. Mr. Dumas?
Good evening, Mr. Dumas.
Good evening.
Evening.
My name is A.C. Dumas, and I'm a resident of the city of Flint, and I have a couple of concerns with the three minutes, and I think, uh, one thing that you ought to at least allow the public to have five minutes to speak. I just, I just believe that. I want to say, uh, first, first of all, that I'm a little concerned about the mayor and the emergency manager's appointment to the, uh, water, uh, committee, citizen advisory committee, and I see all these, uh, groups that's on there, but the one that I don't see, which is dear to my heart, is the National Association of the Advancement of Colored People, the NAACP. As the former president and now second vice president, I think it's very crucial that we have the NAACP and whoever we choose, the executive committee choose as our representative on this committee, seeing that the city of Flint is a majority African-American and people of colored, uh, residents. That's very offensive to me when I see, uh, people from the Genesee, uh, Chamber of Congress, and all those, on those committees. And most of the people don't even live in the city of Flint, and they have no really vested interest in the city of Flint. And that's very offensive to me. I wanna tell... vested interest in the City of Flint, and that's very offensive to me, I want to tell, uh, Ambrose, that's very offensive to me, I've already told the mayor, it's very offensive to me as the second vice president of the NAACP. Now, we do have the city, new city administrator here, and, uh, I see, uh, Mr. Early had violated his own rules when he set up the salary, uh, prior, in the budget, prior to the new city administrator, okay, and he violated his own rules, so I have a problem with that, I don't know the lady, and I guess the jury is out on that, and I would hope that this council, uh, as far as the water, we have two water issues going on, uh, from, uh, Viola, Viola and, uh, Bocock, you know, the, the City of Flint residents, the water customers, we're, we're just confused, should we drink it, or shouldn't we, uh, drink it, I mean, I mean, we paid forty thousand dollars for Viola, and I did my research on the company, and I had Councilman Davis on my broadcast, and as you all do know, that I do have the most listened to broadcast that comes on at nine thirty on, uh, Saturday morning in Tri-County, the black folk listen to, and I don't know if the white community listen to, but I do know black, uh, community listen to, and we have a concern, the lines were jam-packed, as he know, people got frustrated, they couldn't even call in, because they are concerned, so as you all seek to move forward, I hope you would move forward with the people in mind, and my last, before I go sit down, I tend to agree with Mr. Mays, not often, but I do agree with this, that when you sit on the Planning Commission or any of these boards, you no, you no longer represent a ward, it's a committee, other words, your appointment misses, uh, miss, uh, Eighth Ward council person, it now becomes a committee, and so I'm not supporting, I wouldn't support Mr. Wesson, because Mr. Wesson was a chairman of a illegal blue ribbon committee, so why would I want to support him because he's been on there twenty years? That's nonsense, that's ludicrous, and I think you all have individual votes, and so if I can do anything to, uh, hope that Mr. Uh, Davis bring forth ano- another appointment, I will, and one thing about the NAACP, we get engaged in a lot of things, and we will be more active now with Mr. Gregory Easton as the first vice president, the former city ma- uh, uh, administrator that was fired by Darren, by the, the emergency manager that knows this city, A.C. Dumas, the former president of the NAACP, a radio host, and the second vice president, and it's, I think it's time for us to start calling people out, you know, and so, no, I do not support, A.C. Dumas does not support Mr. Uh, Wesson, he sat on an illegal blue ribbon committee, and look what we got now, we just got a hot mess in the City of Flint, thank you.
Thank you. Our next public speaker, Matt Clark.
Our next speaker is Mr. Leo McLean, Mr. McLean.
Good evening.
Good evening, I'm Leo McLean, council, president, I'm here on two reasons, uh, I guess the resident in, uh, the Fifth Ward, and the water bill been high for the last two or three years, and I'm not talking about that, but I'm talking about the last three months, got a water bill, one seventy-five, then it went from one seventy-five to four hundred and fifty dollars, and the next one come back, one seventy-five, I've down here talking to the mayor, and they said probably got a leak, I said, no, they ain't got no leak, you know, that's, that's one of the thing, and another thing, and I called down to the police station, and, uh, the chief called me back, he give me a number, and I called captain, I forgot what the name was, captain, and, uh, I want a, a standby while I go into the house, they say they don't do that, you know, much tax I pay in the City of Flint, I can't get a standby for fifteen minutes, that's ridiculous, you know, but that's all I got to say, but the water and the police, you know, I should've got a standby to go in the house, if I go in there and do something wrong, then I got another problem, you know, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Croft, maybe you can make contact with him about that water issue. Next speaker.
Our next speaker is Mr. Akil Eberchuku.
I'm not gonna try your last name, but good evening.
Thank you so much. Good afternoon to everybody.
Evening.
Thank you for your time, I have two concerns, uh, one, traffic issue, uh, in the Seventh Ward on Leppincott, starting at Tebow, going east to Center Road, the traffic, the concern I have there, for over one year, I've been trying to get that addressed without success from both my ward representation and, and from the police department, uh, with the failure to respond, uh, I believe adequate to the concerns, there's a lot of foot traffic going east from Tebow Street to Center Road on Leppincott, the speed limit is forty-five miles an hour, only in, I believe, the black community can you have, in a residential area, the speed limit forty-five miles an hour, I don't know, no place in the county where you have forty-five miles an hour residential speed limit, except for in the black community on Leppincott, I raise this concern because of a traffic accident that took the life of Vicki, uh, Prince on LaPierre Road, due to a failure of the vehicle to be able to stop on an icy condition, I truly ask this council, uh, and however, I will say, after one year, I met Mr. Croft, Mr. Howard Croft, and I explained my concern to him about the public safety in that area, within ten minutes, Mr. Croft had addressed his staff in regards to that traffic issue, one year, I have been trying to bring it before this body through traditional representation, both my ward representative and the police department, with no response, ten minutes, Mr. Croft addressed that concern, and I hope that Mr. Croft will be able to get the support of the council to reduce the speed limit and to make the public, uh, footing traffic safer in that area, the next concern I have is regarding the water rates, July, this coming, July first, there is a proposed or approved rate increase of an additional six percent, I'll write, I'll wrap it up, Mr.
Please wrap it up, yep, thank you.
These six percent concerns me, we have a bad product as it is, we've had three to five rate increases, three rate increases within the last five year, with the fourth would propose for Ju- July first, that's unacceptable for a bad product, and I would hope that those rates would be temporarily suspended, and reduce in water rates, a shut-off notice for resident be suspended, water credit be given, something need to be done in regards to this water issue, Mr. President and others, because the product is bad, there's no other place in this county that you could go and have a bad product and still have to pay for increase, thank you.
Thank you. Our next public speaker.
The next speaker is Ms. Betty Jones, Ms. Jones.
Ms. Jones? Doesn't appear Ms. Jones is-
Betty Jones.
Next speaker?
Hello, my name is-
Good evening.
Betty Jones, Carter Jones, I don't usually speak at these kind of things, but I've been to a couple of the water situation that's going on around here, the last thing I went to was a Catholic charity a couple of weeks ago, and I've been sick ever since, standing out there in the cold, when they say they gonna help people with these high water bills, all they did was give you, have you putting your name, rank and serial number down, give you two things of water, and it's almost like a pat on your head, you gotta be satisfied with that, I've been sick ever since, I'm standing out there in that cold, like I said, I'm by myself at my house, my water bill now is three hundred and some dollars, ninety some dollars what I used last month, I, I don't have a car wash that I'm running for my house, and I don't stay in the water all day long, so I'm not understanding, I don't have any leaks, I'm like the last speaker, I don't have any leaks, I had to come out and speak today because I'm tired, I'm tired of going through what we're going through here, all we doing is just pan, 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 and there's nobody talking about taking the water rates down, nobody, all we do is go to these meetings, give you a couple of things of water, and you supposed to be satisfied, that don't satisfy me, we need something done, I, like I said, I don't usually speak at these meetings, but I'm tired, something has got to be done, besides just talking, we didn't have to have these meetings when the water rate was raised, it shouldn't have to be all these meetings for they take it down, we can't drink it, we gotta buy water, unless they give you water, take time to give you water, we gotta buy it, and then pay when we can't even drink it, however can't use it, take a bath with, something has got to be done, I had to come out today to speak to see if it can be something done about this, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. President? Will you let her know how we usually address, she might not know why nobody said nothing?
Yeah, we'll, um, we typically allow the public speakers to come forward, and then we address those specific concerns at the end. I say we allow public speakers to come forward, and then we address specific concerns at the end, after we've-
Okay, you want me to stand there?
No, you're fine, sitting down.
No, but-
Yeah, we're not done with the public speaker part yet.
Our next public speaker is Mr. Quincy Murphy, Mr. Murphy.
Good evening. Good evening, my name is Quincy Murphy, and, um, I come here to, uh, speak on the same issue as my neighbor, Ms. Jones, um, when, um, we went to, we seen through the news about, um, the water situation, there are several residents in my neighborhood that do not have their water on or, um, have a high water bill, I'm one of them, I just paid fifteen hundred dollars on my water bill and made arrangements on the remaining amount of, um, my water, everybody not fortunate enough to be able to pay that, and it was a struggle for me to come up with those dollars to pay that, Councilman, um, Nelson gave me some additional dollars to get me a new toilet because my toilet was leaking, everybody is not privileged, and he don't, I know he don't have the resources, and I just want to thank you for what you've done, um, to do that to many residents that's out there struggling with water leaks in a, um, at their houses, when we went to Catholic Char- charities, I was one of those in the line, I'm not ashamed, and, um, that I needed some help, just like other people, but I had a lady in front of me that was disabled, and I kept rubbing her back because she barely could stand in the line, them people did not stand in that line at Catholic charities because they wanted two cases of water and a candy bar and some dried donuts, them people were standing in line because they had water bills in their hand, and they thought that they was gonna get some help with their water bills, only thing we did, I was number eight in the line of probably three hundred people, I called Catholic Salvation Army, or Catholic charities, or whoever y'all said on the news, or what they told me was gonna help us with the water bill, I said, well, you know, I put in the application to try to get some help with my water, but y'all haven't called me, so if I'm number eight and these people number three hundred, and y'all ain't called me yet, so I can imagine when they might get a call, and because I paid fifteen hundred dollars don't mean I don't need the rest of it, some help on the other one, if y'all match, match my fifteen hundred that I just put down, I had to borrow this money to pay my water bill, it's a shame that we not getting help with our water bill, and I hope y'all can do something about it.
Thank you, Mr. Murphy.
Our last speaker is Pastor Alan Gilbert, Pastor Gilbert.
Good evening.
Good evening, President Freeman, thank you, Ms. Brown, I'd just like to, uh, address the council, I know many of you personally, I try, I'm a personable type of person, I like to meet people and make friends, because, uh, an enemy is one that chooses to be my enemy, I don't make a man my enemy because that's what I want him to be, I want him to be my friend, the Bible says that he that obtaineth friends must first show himself friendly, I believe that, and I just want the council to know that I appreciate Councilwoman Galloway, I respect her, and as I do all of you all, I don't agree with all of you all the time, but you're my representative, and I'm gonna support you, and I just want you to know that whatever I can do, I'm willing to do, my wife keeps telling me, she says, let's just pack up and get out of here, and I keep telling her where we gonna go, and I said, you don't want to go to Kentucky, that's where I want to go, that's where I was born and raised, I said, but since I've been here forty-one years, and it's come on my watch, I said, it's some heavy lifting, it's got to be done, and I appreciate what Brother Dumas said, that it is time for those of us within the city to speak out and stand for the city, even when we don't always see eye to eye, I agree with Councilman Mays, that those of us that are gonna serve in these different capacities, whether it is in a voluntary, uh, position, or whatever it's gonna be, we need to come before the council so at least you can see us, and yes, uh, Councilman Kincaid, you're right, I think each council person should be able to bring their charge to the council as a whole, but I want you to know, uh, President Freeman, that I, uh, support all of you, I don't always agree with you, but I support you, and I think we can get this job done, but one thing I want to leave with you is that some things deserve more attention than other things do, and sometime, we deal with small things, but the Bible said, the small foxes is what destroys the vine, if you don't deal with the small things, it's just like if you keep getting up, hitting the snooze button on the alarm, just give me a few more seconds, Councilman, President Freeman, if you keep hitting the snooze button on that alarm, you keep laying in the bed, it just on for a short time, so it's time for us to get up and go to work and do the heavy lifting, because if we don't do it, then the people are gonna suffer, the people in this city are suffering, and as I talked to the EM, uh, emergency manager, Ambrose, I said to him, what is the charge of the commission of the water council between the mayor and what he decided, and I want you all to police that, that's what I expect for you to do, that's what I hope you will do, and if you don't do it, then I'mma come and see you, thank you.
Thank you. That concludes our public speaking portion, we've got council discussion, and I'm trying to decide what side I should start on. Councilman Kincaid.
Thank, thank you, Mr. President, um, I just want to say that I think we had, um, very good discussion in committee today, Councilman Mays, um, you did a great job, um, with the, uh, Special Affairs Committee, a little bit long-winded, but, you know, we go back a long ways, um, but I think it was very, um, very beneficial, Mr. President, to have the, uh, Special Affairs today, I want to welcome Natasha, um, to the City of Flint, I look forward to working with you, I know, um, as I have in the past, had differences with, uh, current city administrators and mayors, and I've never taken it personal, and, uh, I hope as we move forward, I know we're gonna have some differences, and, um, I hope we can keep that, um, professional relationship that we can disagree to agree to disagree, and once it's over, we move on to the next issue, because, believe me, there'll be more issues as we go forward, and with your experience in working in other communities, I know you've gone through that process, so, um, I'm, I'm one person that, um, I, I can tell you that when I make a commitment to do something, I live with my commitment, um, if I do make a change, on, that person that I've made the commitment to will be the first one to know that, um, but I do look forward to working with you, we got a lot of challenges ahead, and, um, any way that I can be of any assistance, um, all you have to do is call and, and, and talk to me, so, thank you, and I look forward to working with you, thank you, Mr. President.
Councilwoman Van Buren?
Yes, I would also-
Yes, I would also like to welcome Natasha Henderson. Today's your first day and I think you got quite an earful of hearing from different people as to what the importance are in the City of Flint. And I think probably, number one, probably has come across is the water issue. Not only the quality of water, but also the cost of the water. As to the situation that Mr. Murphy and Mrs. Jones was talking about, the activity that was held at Catholic Charities, you are not the only ones I've heard that type of comment from. That a lot of people were basically corralled in this small location and not really given the attention or the process necessary for what their needs were. I think, like you said, the expectation is we're there to receive help. Hopefully the help would be right away or you could see it happening. And it didn't sound like that. It's, I don't know if it was confusion, if it was too many people trying to do the right thing and didn't know what they were doing. I think we had some good agencies involved, from what I remember. I think it was Salvation Army, Catholic Charities, and I thought also the City of Flint. If I remember right, I thought I saw the mayor was there at that event. Now, I don't know if that's poor planning or if it was done just for show. But when you can't even satisfy half the people that are there with the process you're supposed to do, then we are not doing a good job. If we say we're going to help, then let's give the help and do the planning or the process a little bit better. Like, why can't it be done one day here at City Hall? We got all those chairs down in the water department. We have a lot of elderly, a lot of handicapped, that cannot stand for a long period of time. And then you asking them to stand in line in the cold? That was ridiculous. There was, to me, that is just not planning, like you don't care. All that was, was an event for show, but you didn't care about who showed up or how to take care of them or how to process it. I hope that something better comes out of that and I hope there is some type of action. The city can somehow help to implement, to help the residents with the process and to understand the process. Because there are some solutions, there are some help out there. But if we can't get the monies out there to help them, because I've heard there are problems. We don't have enough staffing at some of these agencies to process this application. Also, the processing of these applications, you have to go to different locations to get a little bit of money here and a little bit of money there before you have the pile of money that you need to go take care of the one bill. So, I think the monies are out there, but there has to be pooled together. I think the people have to be pooled together. And I think we have to be more humane when we take care of our residents. We can't expect, just because we're not the ones that are suffering, if we're the agency trying to give them out the money and we can't, we don't have the empathy to understand the situation, maybe we shouldn't be in that job. But let's do a little bit better job of helping those that need the help and get that help out there. That's what I have to say.
Thank you, Councilwoman. We've got Councilwoman Galloway.
Thank you, President. First of all, I'd like to apologize to Brother Akil for not meeting his expectations. I wanna go on the record as saying that I had spoken with everyone that I thought was able to handle it. I shared his concern, he shared his concern with Councilman Mays, who was also part of the Legislative Committee. Spoke on several occasions to Chief Tolbert, who assured me that he would have patrolmen and we'd begin a process in checking out those speeds. I think we even brought it to public safety on a couple of occasions. Had I known that Howard Croft, who is definitely my go-to man and consistently helps to resolve issues, that he was the person, definitely would've did that. And so again, I just wanna apologize, not just to him, I'm concerned with that area too. And so I just wanted to make sure that I said that. I think that we need a process though. Because there are things that we can do. And when you, even as your representative, when I take it to the people that are supposedly able to handle those situations, that's all I can do. So it doesn't mean I don't care, it doesn't mean that I am inefficient. But I'm glad that, and I am gonna follow up with Howard to find out what can be done. Peter Bate, I don't know, I know that you're part of, the Legislative Committee is no longer in the place, but one of the concerns is speed limit reduction. And we talked about that between Center Road, really, and Lippincott. On, I mean, I'm sorry, Dorit Highway and Center Road, on Lippincott and LaPire. There are areas where the speed limit is not monitored. And there's not a presence with the police department, which the police have a lot to do. And so if we can follow up with that, that would be greatly appreciated. And so I just, again, wanted to apologize on the record. You can't speak now, once you've made your comment, but I just wanted to be on the record as saying it was never my intention to disappoint you or feel as though you bringing your concern to me without notice, so. And Natasha, once again, on record, looking forward to working with you, really am.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilman Winfrey.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a few things I want to echo the sentiments of my colleagues to Ms. Henderson. I publicly, I want to say that I'm looking forward to working with you. Because we, there's a lot of work that needs to be done. This weekend, I had six calls coming in from constituents and all of them were not about the quality of water. I think we've almost beat that one to death. But it was about the price of water. And I don't know if this conversation has been had before me coming, but we really need, I think, to look at that again. I have an issue with people keep coming back to this council complaining about the water rates and it seems that we appear to not be able to do something about it. Now, I know that they're just not making that up, because when I looked at my water bill, I'm having the same issues. And I know it's not use and I know it's not breakage and all that kinda stuff, leaks and all those kinds of things. It's something else. And I think we need to address that. And being a freshman, I don't know how it's done, but I guarantee you I will find out. Now, if there isn't anything that we can do, then we need to say that. But we shouldn't just keep listening to them come back and tell us about these problems that they have with these high water bills. And then we got friends who live all around the fringes and they're enjoying good water and they're not paying as much. There is something wrong with that. And then the last thing is that I hope that we hold Viola's feet to the fire. I want them to tell us about how they feel about Mr. Bo Cox's recommendations to the DBW. I think that's our responsibility. And I know for forty thousand dollars, they can tell us that. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Davis.
Thank you, Mr. President Freeman. First, I wanna elaborate on what my colleague, Mr. Winfrey, said. I brought a report about Viola. Viola has been charged with litigation all over this country for many decades. And I left a lot of information on the back table so that the public can be aware of this. What bothered me the most is, is when I got elected in office, there was a lot of vetting. But the vetting process didn't take place from with MLive and with the new states until after I got elected. But they knew about my, they knew about my past. But me and my colleagues was vetted and we was put out there. Basically, we was put out there and it was kinda demoralizing. When some of the city administrations, people that was going for city administration, they was vetted. And their past was put out there as well. I gave copies to all of my colleagues and I gave copies to the media and everybody about this company, Viola, being sued in California by two law firms for spilling pollutions into the San Francisco Bay. I even confronted them about being sued in New York, Louisiana, and Texas. This company has been sued many places. And environmental groups has kinda chased them out of some places where they went. And it bothered me that this issue has never been brought up. But the public needed to know about this. Because they was paid forty thousand dollars of our tax money to tell ninety thousand people that the water was safe to drink. And I told them that that was erroneous information. And it kinda makes them complicit to any of the illnesses and the problems that people suffer from to come into our city and only be here a week and tell them that the water is safe to drink. Now, I'm gonna get away from that topic. Now, you know, and you can get the information on the back table and then you Google them up and do research for yourself. The water rates, Mr. Bo Cox came here and he was with me for eight hours, that whole day, the entire day. Me and Councilman Mays and Kerry Nelson and a few other council people had the opportunity to speak to him. He gave some heavyweight information about how this water rates can be reduced. He said, "If we lower down on some of the chemicals that we're using in the water plant, because all of those chemicals is being a factor of the water rates, from the electricity, from using some of the chemicals, from the legacy costs, which is retirement for some workers that works in the water department, if we can cut back on some of them chemicals that really don't need to be used." And what he spoke about was the lime softener. He said, "Because the lime softener only makes the water even more dirtier. And then it causes corrosions in our pipes. That's why your water come out looking discoloration, looking yellow and orange and every other color. Because those are the sediments that's seeping through the water pipes when it's corroded." So he said, "Really don't need the lime softener. It's probably only good, from his estimation, is in the winter. But in the summer and the spring, you really don't need it." And that can be a part of being reducing in the water rates, because that's added in to your water rates. I think, and I'm gonna put a referral to a table right now and ask that we get an itemized list on what the money is spent on, from the water and sewer funds, so that we can do the math on ourselves. We need to know everything that is calculated into the water rates that's coming from the water plant, from the maintenance workers and everybody. Because he said that we're spending seven hundred and eighty-nine or maybe seven hundred and ninety-eight dollars per square foot from Detroit. And by the time it gets here, we sell it for thirty-five hundred square foot. And he was wondering where was the other twenty-eight hundred dollars going? He did arithmetic. Everything in life is mathematically and that's why I was so intrigued by what he was saying. I didn't understand it, but I was intrigued. Because one thing I've always known is that life is mathematic. You know math, you can actually resolve the equation and figure it out in arithmetic, you know? This plus this equals this and that plus that equals that. So that's how our water rates can be reduced. If we just cut back on some things and then we find out where this money is being spent and see how can we cut back on some of these things? Because some of these things may not be needed. But I like to put a referral to the table, Mr. President. Today, we can get an itemized list and see what are we spending this money for? And where is this other twenty-eight hundred dollars? If he's correct, not saying he is, but if he is, then we need to know where is this extra additional money being spent? And then we can talk about lowering the water rates. Because that's the best way we can do that. My foundation paid eighty thousand dollars to a company called Ratfield to come in here and tell us about our water rates. Ratfield made an estimation and said that the way that our water rates are right now, that our infrastructure and our water plant would not sustain for the next fifty years if we keep the water, if we keep the water rates at the rate it is now. The emergency manager took that as face value. And so he arbitrarily and unilaterally, which meant he made his own decisions, and went and raised the water rates. The water rates was raised prior to him. Two different times, from one emergency manager and the mayor. So, we have to do the math to figure out how can we bring the water rates down. We can, we can make complaints, which is okay. But we have to be solution-driven right now. We have to do this mathematically. Is look at the numbers and switch the numbers around and see how these numbers fits and makes a difference. And we have to do this collectively as a whole. Because I knew when they spent that eighty thousand dollars, that eighty thousand dollars was not gonna be spent in vain. You don't spend eighty thousand dollars to come back and tell you something that you don't wanna hear. So, that's my statement. And I, and I hope that my referral, because everything else, even speaking about Viola, has never been brought up. And I think that should be told to the public, that this company has been sued for many decades. And I got copies right there on the back of the table if you guys want it. This company was very incompetent and been questioned all over this country. Please do not take what they saying for face value. And then I'm gonna conclude it. Mr. Bo Cox said that we have nine sediments in our water that's regulated. But there are hundreds and hundreds of them that are ten thousand times worse than the TTHM that are not regulated. You have to realize that the EPA only put regulations to our water and sewer plants or to our water distribution only forty years ago. And once you find a sediment in the water, they have to do a study all over the country to see if this problem is going on all over the country before it goes into legislation. It takes fifteen years after that time of discovery for it to go into legislation. So if we found something right now, just making up a name says Zoo Boo Boo, and it can do this to you, it takes fifteen years before it becomes regulated. So you have to be mindful of that. Then you got carbon and lead that's only looked for every four years. So if they look for copper and lead today, they don't look for it again in two or more years. But during that four-year span, you may be taking in copper and lead. So it's a very, it's a very sensitive issue. It's hazardous to our health. And I think for anybody to say that the water is good to drink is wrong. I wouldn't give that. And I think Viola should've been fair and just to us and said, "Hey, we don't know, but we here to figure it out." But just to get on the news and try to corroborate what Channel Twelve said, I think that was erroneous. Because no one has come here from the federal level and lanced and checked it going through your pipes. Because as it travels through your pipes and goes through your tap, it also carries with it sediments. That's why your water is all different colors. And the worst part about it is when you taking hot showers, the steam in the air, you inhaling it, your kids inhaling it. And pregnant women in their third trimester will have low baby weight and birth defects. And it can cause bladder cancer, it can cause colon cancer, it can cause all type of stuff. I look at this as a genocide. It bothers me, it really does. It stresses me out because I know that we have to make this a legal issue. But it seemed like when I said it just lies on deaf ears. You know, the old saying, I can imagine what all of our great leaders went through when they was always trying to tell the people something. And if you look at some of the things with Martin Luther King, he's always in stress. Or you look at Malcolm X, he's always in stress. And they always got the one finger up because it's frustrating when you try to tell so many people the truth, but it lies on deaf ears. You have to make this a legal issue in order to get the justice that you're looking for. But when you file your lawsuit, you have to have an expert testimony that's connected with it or the federal court would dismiss it.
Thank you, Councilman.
You're very welcome, thank you.
Councilman Nelson.
Thank you, Mr. President. Ms. Henderson, welcome, as other colleagues have said, to our city. Looking forward to having dialogue with you in the future. Let me say two things and I'll be out the way. I want a referral, if I could, Mr. President, done to the emergency manager, the mayor, and to our new city administrator also, about some representation being on that board from the NAACP. If you would do that for me, please. This is this, all citizens on this water committee?
Yep, I know what you mean, it's actually an item that I've got written down already.
The next thing, if I could, Mr. Murphy spoke and he brought about seven residents that are neighbors with him. And if they are neighbors of his, then they have to be in the third ward. And I need to get information from them, if I could, and then get with Mr., with Howard and try to work out something for those residents. It was said to me in July, we're looking at possibly a six percent water increase. I think we need to do all, well, I will, I know, and I'm quite sure all of us will, to make sure that does not happen. The people of this city cannot afford any more water hikes. Water is no good. You can't take showers, I'm taking cold showers. Now, I want you to look at me, I can't buy enough water to bathe with. I've already buying water to cook and drink with and brush your teeth with. And I just, I think that we need to get to the point that we need to look out for our citizens. And Ms. Henderson, you came in at a time where we are at a critical stage in this city and that we must take care of our citizens because they really don't trust us right now. It's a lack of trust right now. Because what they, I think Ms. Jones said she's been to meetings after meetings, but there is no solutions. People need solutions now. We've met on every church corner, we've come here, we met, but now people need relief. And so if I could, budget talks are coming soon and this thing that's happening in July... and, and this thing that's happening in July is really deadlier than a cancer if we allow it to happen. 6% increase on what they already paying? That's not acceptable. And, and I think that we need to get with the emergency manager, the mayor, and, and, and this new city administrator and whoever connect the dots. Uh, and, and my colleagues, I know they're ready to roll up their sleeves, uh, and to, to make sure this 6% does not happen. Uh, Mr. President, that is all I have.
Thank you, Councilman Nelson. Councilman Mays?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. Um, Ms. Henderson, we spoke this evening. Looked like you went the distance and you stayed around. I would say to you that the reputation Flint has as a dangerous or whatever type of city, it's not true. It's what you're around and who you're around. So I think you can be okay in this city as far as that go and concern-wise, but now getting to the work and the business. The number one issue is the water, rates and quality. The solution is we want relief. We can push a button and open a valve and the citizens can have a better quality water from Detroit day before yesterday, last month. It's just that the people in power don't want to spend the money. The money we got, we looked at the water and sewer fund when I requested those monies and it was a $10 million net after six months. Now, whatever that money, that's 10 million is allocated for, or they'll say what is allocated for, we know the figures for Detroit water, between one and 1.5 million per month, short-term, emergency basis, one month, two months. I don't worry about the projected increases in June because by the time we get to June, based upon what Mr. Bowcock, the expert that I seem to believe, if they listen and use granulated coal, lower the chlor- chlorine levels, order the right chemicals, get the right expertise, it's a chance that they might can get Flint River water right. But they ain't got it right in 50 years because the river got so many variables and in the summertime, they go crazy. Just look at it as microorganisms, chemistry in the summer, they moving, in the winter, they slow. But the standards say we must test over four quarters. And when we test over four quarters, if they're not below the average, then the EPA makes us send out a notice in our community to the average citizen that says if you're an infant, an elderly, or somebody with a compromised immune system, all we can do is tell you to check with your doctor. See, Mother Mays is 84. She stay with me, she had to check with her doctor. They gave her some cream for the rashes. And I won't tell you all of where the rashes was at. So I'm dead serious when I hear elderly and infants talk about rashes. And what's going to trip the community out is in the next three weeks, by law, they gotta send out another notice for the violation. While on the other hand, experts and others is saying stuff people average can't understand is safe drinking. Channel 12 testing for one day saying it's safe drinking and the test and the EPA standards is over four quarters. So we about tired of it. So in your power, when it's talking to regular folks, I don't have to know as much about water as Forrest Gump knew about shrimp. But I am Michigan State. I understand trihaloathamines. I understand that the chemicals in the Flint River mixture of chemicals to try to purify it is so corrosive that General Motors said, we don't want to use it because it's corroding our parts out at V8 engine. And then the expert tells me the chemical mixture is so corrosive that when it passed through our cast iron pipes, because the pipes ain't used to having that type of corrosive chemical passing through it from Detroit, because Lake water was easier to treat, that when it passed through the pipes, it gets some stuff off of them. And that's why it's discolored. Because that same corrosion that GM said no to is corroding inside of the pipes. See, I don't have to talk like a scientist to talk in plain language for people to understand what I say. But let me explain this. The price, in my view, Madam City Administrator, is connected to the price of infrastructure. See, when we had 11 plants and cash was flowing, 11 plants, one over there Buick City, we had AC, we had Chevy, um, downtown, wasn't it Scott? Was that Fisher Body downtown? Well, guess what? We had so much revenue and the people sitting in the places like me and you are now and others wasn't minding the stove. They didn't stack up money to fix pipes that had gone unfixed. And so now in a short period of five years with a handful of people, they want to put fixing the pipe money in water rates. And so the water rate is about 30, 40 dollars a month, but with that extra 200 dollars they charging to fix pipes, Councilman Mays say, get it from the state.
Yes, sir.
Get it from the federal government. When you get state and federal help, I don't care if it's revolving loan fund money or something they invent. They just brought 20 and million in here to tear down houses. I'd rather get 20 million to fix pipes and get people safe water because water is a human right.
Yes, sir.
So we not moving with a certain urgency. Some people say go to federal court. I wouldn't say care if you go to state court, federal court, whatever. But my mom, the people in the community I represent, we gonna get some safe water.
Yes, sir.
And we don't care if it costs an extra 800,000 to cut on the faucet versus drinking dirt.
Yes, sir.
When I say dirt, that corrosion is coming through the pipes. It took experts to come in here and figure out that them chemicals is getting stuff off the inside of the pipes. It's really happening. So even though you hear us talk about this issue, you gonna have to be really sensitive to communicating to people who can make change yesterday. Once you see the budget, it don't matter if you push the button, open the valve and give us relief for about a month, two months. We still ain't spent but about 3 million. We got 7 million still in the water and sewer fund. And then the experts are saying, when we order the new chemicals and come up with the new mixture to keep trying on this Flint River water, it might take us two months to get it together anyway. So that's what we dealing with when you hear us talk about the water issue. Ms. Jones, I can assure you that we working. Because it's a couple of, some of us on here who just got a lot of nerves. We will file paperwork against Genesee Towers. We will file in court for injunctive relief in order to try to get water good. We'll do that. We ain't stupid up here. We got lawyers around us and we got sense. And then the rates, if you see the mayor and others lobby Snyder and kill DNM and you see money drop for what they call infrastructure, in the same breath, when it drop, we gonna say lower them rates. Even if it don't drop, you can lower the rates.
Yes, sir.
And Ms. Henderson, let nobody fool you. You don't have to increase rates or spend extra money to get good water yesterday. So I'm gonna say that and I'm gonna say this. Ms. Henderson, when you meet with this council and as you come into our community, we want some emergency manager orders gone. See, when I came on the council, they slid the goalpost back and moved the rim up higher. It never was a five-minute rule on council members such as it is now. It never was a three-minute rule on the citizens as it is now. So under this emergency manager law, as you become the liaison between the city of Flint and po' folks. See, it ain't all just black and white folks. Some of us got a common bond, po' folks. You ever had a councilman sit on the councilman in his freshman year and didn't have water for seven months? And he was a councilman. That's me. We don't make but 315 every two weeks. I do this job for free, but the point is when we transition from one property to another, in some cases, it didn't affect me, but you got 450 dollar water deposits to go along with first month and last month's rent for po' folks. You got so much stuff you got to learn. So if you ought to be accepted in this community with that 140,000 dollars, then get to know who's who. You gonna have so many people talking to you and we all talk good. You ain't gonna know if I'm the good one, if I'm the bad one, if that's the good one and this that bad one. It took me 56 years to learn Flint. But I tell you this, between me, you and God, I tell you the truth. I tell you the truth if it's about me and it hurt me. Let me leave you with this truth. It wasn't four flat tires and I wasn't trying to change name. It was three. And we'll finish that story somewhere when I get these televisions off. God bless you.
All right. We need a motion to adjourn. Well, before we adjourn, the referral made by Councilman Davis, um, let's put that on the finance committee agenda. And then, um, you can send the referral down to the administration about Councilman Nelson, but I was going to bring that up with, um, Jerry in the morning.
Mr. President, the Davis referral had to do, Mr. Davis, with the amount of money that we spend in the water and sewer fund?
Right.
And we done made that referral two months ago, so I hope they give it to you, Mr. Davis.
We got, we got it two months ago as well.
And so if you want it to come not in finance, but in the planning?
Well, well, I wanted, I'm sending it to finance.
What I was asking for, Councilman Mays, a, a, a point of information, is I was asking for an itemized list on where we're spending every dollar out of the water and sewer fund so that we can calculate and see how can we pull back on certain things to lower the rates. Because from Bowcock's estimation, about the 789 dollars per square foot that we're spending to Detroit.
Right.
And then when we get it, we're selling it for 3,500 square foot.
Right.
We need to find out where that 2,800 dollars is at, if this is accurate.
Based on his calculation, but what I want to do-
I've got that as a referral and it's going to go to the finance committee.
Is try to clear it up, where can we have it broke down, not annually, but monthly.
Right.
Itemize what we spend monthly, which might be a quicker reach, but I think we saying the same thing. And I didn't want to interfere with it, but I want that information because the governor asked for a comparison between Flint and Detroit. And Ms. Henderson, I'm glad that you sent it to her as well. Because as the new city administrator, if you can get the financials on the Flint River water cost in a nutshell, that's what we want. If you can help us facilitate special meetings on water, because sometime we meet as a committee of three, because we are part-time council and people, others got jobs. So, all I want to do is emphasize to her that we are intelligent group. We got sense, but we the ones who they call the most. They don't call nobody but us and we want to fix this and we know how. I appreciate it.
Picking up what you're laying down and what I need is a motion to adjourn.
So, Mr. President, you want me to move to adjourn?
Support. It's been moved and supported. Is there any further discussion?
Do we need a roll call?
Can we have roll call, please?
Ms. Van Buren?
Yes.
Mr. Kincaid?
Yes.
Mr. Mays?
Oh, I don't believe our work is done. I vote no to adjourn. It's still work to do.
Mr. Nelson?
Yes.
Mr. Freeman?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Winfrey?
Yes.
Ms. Scalloway?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Ms. Hannah?
Quincy?
Is he here?
Give me a call.
Quincy.